All right, we're gonna open the meeting of May 29. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We have an appointment at 7:15. We got a few minutes, so we'll do a few of the things on our agenda. We have meeting minutes, open session. The only one that's ready is, what, May 14?
Right.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Anything to be said? Okay, great. Call for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And we'll do the 21st next meeting. The next thing is a motor vehicle FY '18. Two, three people for 259.58.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You sign it as well. Ready? We have an appointment of Karen Gault to the Cultural Commission with the term expiring 5/31/2019.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, you're really good. You've already done that, too.
Hey, you like that?
All right. We have an issuance of a wine and malt license for Berlin Liquors at 3 Bassett Road. The ABCC approved it on 5/24. Contingent on issuance, we should make, we're going to make it contingent on issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the building inspector.
Motion to approve?
Any other questions, or?
Nope.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
I keep thinking near the curb.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right. It's all good. It's just a habit. It's all good. All right. We have a selectmen's schedule for next year, the open meeting law dates. Did anybody have a chance to take a look and have any feedback?
I did, I looked through it. I'm good with my schedule.
Do you want to copy?
Yes, please, that'd be lovely. Thank you.
Okay. You've seen this before, right?
Yeah.
It's gonna be one three-week stretch.
And that is?
Late line to August, I think.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And I actually will be gone August 13.
Is that one of the dates?
Mm-hmm. It is. I just found out today.
Okay. Does the board want, you want to shift it, or do you want to?
Do you have a vacation scheduled?
The week after, the 20th.
Okay. So if we shifted it to the 6th and the 20th, then that wouldn't work. We'd have to have the 6th and the 27th.
So you go the 27th. Yeah, and then you've got another two-week gap, three-week gap.
It's not really the end of the world. I mean, if there was an emergency, you could pop in another meeting, but I'm just talking about regularly scheduled. If you want to do that, you want to do August 6th and 27th?
Want to do that?
Instead of the 13th?
That's fine.
All right. And then there was, what, just a week off, I think, in December?
Right, with the way Christmas and New Year's falls.
Right.
I don't know how you want to handle that. I mean, New Year's, you could just do the 2nd, which is a Wednesday, I think.
So that would be just missing one week.
Shouldn't be.
Well, not really, because is the 26th circled?
No, that's like a tentative. If you wanted to stick one in there, you could stick it in on the 26th, the 27th.
I think you want to do that.
Or we could just take that week off unless we have an emergency.
Why don't we take that off and deal with it?
Nothing on Christmas week?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So do we need a, do you want to vote to approve?
Vote if you want to vote as amended. So that would be, for August, it would be the 6th and the 27th, no meeting Christmas week, and for January, it'd be, the first week in January would be the 2nd on a Wednesday.
Okay.
Those would be the only amendments.
Yep.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's see. Do you all, do we have enough time to do the selectmen appointments, or?
I don't think there's anything left that's controversial.
Okay.
The only thing that is unresolved is at the end of June appointment for Capitol Planning Committee. He still wants a little bit more time, John Solera, to decide.
Okay.
But otherwise, if you approve that, that gets you through the end of May, the end of this month.
Okay.
And I can post all the vacancies if you want online, just so you can possibly even take an action on that journey to fill some seats.
And then I said to Amy that if she'd like to talk to us a little bit about appointed town council, since she happens to be here.
Right.
We did, I did send to you both a proposal from Elizabeth Valerio from VDH, who is our labor counsel. And then I spoke with Amy on the phone, if you want to elaborate a little bit.
Sure. Just recently, the town has had close interactions with a few attorneys at KP Law, so we were thinking that possibly we would switch the primary person at KP. Joel Bard has been the primary in Berlin for years and years. He's actually kind of winding down, looking to retire at some point. So we feel that now's a really good time to pass, to switch primary. So how we work in our firm, we have a primary attorney, we have a land use, a primary attorney for the town, and we have a land use, primary land use, primary labor, primary contracts, things like that. But the primary, everything goes through the primary, and they keep track of what's outstanding, what needs to get done, things like that. And so recently, you guys have had quite a bit of land use issues or matters, and so you've been dealing directly with me. And then the other thing is on town meeting issues. Janelle Austin is, she's been attending your town meetings for a couple of years now, so she's very familiar with the town. There's another person, Brian Mazur, who was recommended to Chris by someone else, who, he's wonderful, very, very organized.
Actually, Elizabeth Valerio recommended him if he wanted to stay with KP Law.
Yeah. So I guess my suggestion would be that the board possibly, you know, we would love it to be, we would love to be reappointed. We love representing this town. But change the primary. Change the primary to, it could be the three of us, two of us, one of us. I can, I can get back to Chris, and I can work with Chris and Mary on exactly who it would be. We wanted to, I wanted to confirm with Brian Mazur that he's not super, super busy. I don't think he is, but I think he can take on another town. And if that's the case, he would be doing your town meetings. And he's, he does town meetings. He's very, very, he's very well-versed in general municipal. I'm more on the land use side, but I am very organized in tracking things, so if things come through me, they will get done and tracked, and so.
That's what we're looking for.
Yes, yes.
We just need to make sure we can't go three weeks waiting for a warrant to come back.
Exactly, right. And that should not happen, and that will not happen with any of the three of us that I'm proposing. It absolutely will not happen. So, and we are all, we all serve as primaries in other towns, so we know what, we know how to do it. And our other towns are very happy with us and our organization, so.
Okay. So I guess I would suggest sticking with KP for the time being and seeing how it works out. And one of the main reasons I say that is because it's a little less expensive per hour.
We are probably the least expensive that you'll find.
And, so I don't know how you all feel about that?
Agreed, and we've had really good experience with Amy.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
So, do you want a vote for all of the appointments?
They're actually listed right now, until you've changed course, they are up for an annual renewal, but it's totally basically at will, so if any time you wanted to change course, you could.
Okay.
So they're already, at default, keeping the one.
Yep.
They're still there.
Okay, so.
And your special labor counsel, if that's your choice, would remain Valerio.
Okay.
If that's what you want to do.
Yes, and I mean, we could go either way, I think, but I worked with Liz for many years.
Right, and I think Brian and Liz would get along very well because they, obviously she recommended him, so.
Yes.
And they work together, so.
Okay.
So I think that would work. That's fine with us.
All right. So I'm asking, do you need a vote for?
Yeah, you just signed the end, that pink tab is just signing to say that's where you're at right now.
Okay, now, is that agreed? Both of you?
Does that include economic development?
Nope, that has a yellow, we're on hold waiting for the planning board.
Yeah, and they said they have something.
There's still a few outstanding.
Well, they are meeting tonight, so they might be.
Yeah, I think they may have something.
I think I'm gonna go there and come back.
Yeah, I think somebody was gonna top it down.
If you want, you can hold that delay in the meeting and see if you get their feedback.
Let's wait.
Okay. Just to downhole.
All right, sounds good. All right. Remind me, we have to go back to that. All right. So it's about 7:15. We'll take on our appointment, which is 104 Crosby Road, the cease and desist order update. And I'm going to trust hopefully that the information that was requested of you at the last meeting has come through, will be coming through shortly. I'll, go ahead, Amy, if you want.
I am waiting for an affidavit that I was told I would have.
It's right here.
And so just as a quick, just a quick update, as you know, a cease and desist order was issued based on some complaints regarding the amount of material that was being brought into one particular site. There was a public hearing on this where the board asked for a couple things. The board asked for either an affidavit that all of the soil pursuant to Article 19, which is the like-kind soils bylaw, that that, an affidavit satisfying that all of the soil brought into the site, brought to the site, was originated in town. If that wasn't the case, then the board requested that an application be filed. So I worked with Attorney Yates, who represents the owners of 104 Crosby Road, and we have come up with, he has an affidavit, I think he should, you know, thank you, that would indicate that the soil that's currently on the site was brought in by, was brought in, and there should be, there's an affidavit from the owner of the, from the origin, from the originator, and that the, that the soil came from River Road in town. And so that satisfies the, that would satisfy the soil that's there. There is going to be additional soil brought in for additional grading, et cetera. So what I have recommended is that the board make a motion that the owners have to submit either another affidavit, or, which would I think be easier for the owners, and just as sufficient, would be an invoice from wherever they're getting this material, an invoice that shows that it's coming from a place in town, the amount, the date, and all of that stuff, and that has to be submitted to the building inspector prior to the soil being trucked in. And I think that would cover any concerns. And again, I think that this, this has come to light because there's such a, such a large amount that was brought in, and that could be still brought in. This way, the building inspector can track that and keep track of that. And so I think that by accomplishing those two things by the affidavit that we have, and then a provision of what they have to do in the future will satisfy Article 19.
Okay. And just so you know, that it was neighbors, it was, you know, people who live near there that were concerned with all the trucks going in and out. So is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes, for the additional soil that we'll be able to provide, I don't know if it would be called an invoice, but a receipt, because the cost of the soil that we're gonna be bringing in is really in the trucking. It's not something we're purchasing from the BJ site, correct me if I'm wrong, but if the cost is in the trucking, so we would provide a receipt from vendors and stating how much fill is being taken and trucked across town, and submit that to the building inspector before we bring it in.
Yeah, including the amount.
Yeah.
All right. Is that good with you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Is there anything else? Peggy, anything?
So what I would do is, I can, the affidavit is the affidavit that I, I did approve earlier today.
Mm-hmm.
And then what I can do is, after your vote, I can send an email to the building inspector, just so he knows exactly what he's looking for.
Okay.
Okay? And it will be in your minutes and everything, too.
Great. All right. So we need to make this motion? The proposed motion?
Yeah, the proposed motion, you know, the only thing is, I'll look at it really quick, because I think that it says invoice, so, no, I said that additionally, I move the property owner to submit receipts to the building inspector indicating the origin and amount of any additional soil to be transported and deposited at the property. Is that?
Yep.
Agreeable?
Okay.
We don't plan on bringing any more fill until the house is framed, anyway, so construction is in, commence again, and it's not something that's immediate, but.
That's the affidavit.
Okay.
Okay.
It's forthcoming.
All right. So do I hear a motion, upon review and acceptance of an affidavit, which we've done, from the owner of the property, where the soil originated, confirming that all existing soil at the property, 104 Crosby Road, originated in Berlin, I move that the board lift appropriately issued existing cease and desist order. Additionally, I move that the property owner submit receipts to the building inspector indicating the origin and amount of any additional soil to be transported and deposited at the property prior to any additional soil being deposited at the property. Do I hear a motion?
I think you made the motion, didn't you?
I did.
And we need a second?
Well, okay, either way.
Seconded.
You're the seconder.
I'm the seconder.
All right.
Seconded.
Okay, is there anything else, anyone else?
I think she might have sent the affidavit from the property owner, or it's from the contractor.
Owner of the property where the soil originated.
Right.
Yes.
Not the property owners.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. All right, hearing nothing, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Best of luck. Mary, do you need this?
This is the second page, sorry.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we're up to the 2018 Selectmen Liaison Update. I had spoken to Dennis. You sort of requested, I think, that I go discuss health insurance possibly with them, so I went in last week. And Dennis and I will be meeting with the Maya rep first, and then call a meeting with the Insurance Advisory Commission.
Are you all set with me, or do you want me to come back?
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Yep, thank you. Pleasure meeting you.
So that is the plan. And I do not mind being the liaison to the collector treasurer, if that's agreeable to both.
That's fine. My only thing would be that I did talk to Dave Westerling, because he's also concerned about insurance, and he said if you want somebody from finance, he would be happy to do that, so.
Oh, all right.
There you go.
All right. Well, maybe we could let Dennis know, and.
I'll do that.
All right, good. I mean, I don't mind being the liaison to it, I didn't know if I needed to be an actual member, anyway.
Yeah, I just think it's a, it's a, something that's very impactful to the town, so.
Right.
We really need to have somebody from us interacting there.
And as far as the Investment Advisory Committee, that's not exactly my thing. If either one of you wanted to, I can liaison it, I don't want to be a voting member, and that's fine, too.
He is not looking for a voting member.
Okay, good, good. All right, so I mean, I can liaison with that, too.
They haven't met in three years, I think.
The Investment Advisory?
Yeah.
I think, and it was a whole year for the Insurance Advisory, so.
It has been, yeah.
Maybe we need to, I'm sure we need to ramp up the Insurance Advisory. All right.
Oh, one more question. Are you gonna take over the transition from tax collector to treasurer, too, if you're doing Dennis, or do you want me to continue touching base with him about that?
You want to just keep me posted on what the necessary?
Okay.
You can get me up to speed, anyway, and then I can let you know.
Okay. Yeah, I've just been checking in periodically to make sure things are going according to the plan.
Right.
That they're getting the training that they need, that they're.
Yes. Well, Dennis does keep me up to date as far as, you know, the training he's going to, and so on and so forth, just like when I run into him, but that would be good if you, if you sort of take tabs on it, too.
Okay.
At the, for the time being.
Not a problem.
Okay. All right. Update, library ACO, water testing protocol, and water meter installation status. I think actually, the email that Janet Lamy sent sort of covered everything that I was gonna tell you, anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Let's see here. The, the state has not signed off on the ACO just yet, and it needs to be, it needs to be, the first testing needs to be done 30 days from their signing. So, but however, Bill Brookings from the Shoba Board of Health will do the first test next Thursday at 9:30. And after that, Keith has arranged for Whitewater to be hired as soon as possible to continue the testing regimen.
So next Thursday is the 7th of June, next Thursday, or Thursday, the 31st?
That one, actually, when I spoke to Keith, it was last week, so I'm assuming it's this Thursday.
Okay, 31st.
So, and that's all I really have for an update. And so if it's okay with you guys, we can move on to the Bullard House renovations. And I think, Lisa, you were gonna fill us in?
Yep.
Attended a meeting this afternoon?
I did. This was the first meeting they'd held since June 23rd of last year. They are looking at becoming more active again. They scheduled two meetings while I was there. The first one is on June 11th, then they will be the second Monday of the month at 7:30. They are at the 1870 Town Hall. I think it would be good if people are interested to go and get involved in this particular They are looking forward to meeting their liaison, and we'll get Peg up to speed. At the next meeting, they're gonna discuss a plan for going forward with the Bullard House. I did bring up having potentially a split-off building.
Committee?
Committee. I'm hoping that they will get on board with that. I think that that is, is something that they could use help with, so we'll see what they come back with. I did make sure that they understood that town money was being spent, so we need to keep track, and we need to make sure that things are moving forward. Dave Westerling was also there from Capitol Planning, and he also gave some input from his standpoint on Capitol Planning, and I think that will also help with some of the buildings in town, the Bullard House project included. So I think we're moving in the right direction. We'll just have to see how things go, and I think it's important to follow up with the commission after their meetings about how things are going and how the Bullard House is moving forward.
Do we have a question in the audience?
I was just wondering if the meeting is open to the public.
Absolutely. The Building Commission is a, a public committee, so all of their meetings are open. So yes, as I said, please attend if you have questions, and if you want to give them help, they would certainly appreciate it.
And these meetings are in the evening, correct?
They're gonna be in the evening. They're at 7:30 on Mondays, the second Monday of the month. They're, the next two are scheduled, so.
So will there be follow-up, because we have meetings on Mondays, too?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, somebody, probably Peg is gonna have to touch base with them after their meetings. And they're not here, so it's not like.
Right.
They're, they're over eight. And there is, there is actually a good reason to have them open over at 1870. That allows them to go over to the Bullard House and take a look at anything that's progressing if they're right there.
Now, you, you had mentioned to me about the building inspector.
Yep, I had, I spoke with Joe, and he was going to go in there. He is going to be out for a few days. He's having some family health issues that I was gonna update you with later. But yeah, it isn't his intention to just go in and take a look and update everybody on where things have gone and how the building looks, since I think it's been a while since Larry has been in there.
Maybe, wouldn't be a bad idea to, for him to attend the meeting and go through the building, then.
That wouldn't be a bad idea, either. I will actually recommend that to Joe.
Okay. Does Joe, do you know if Joe has a copy of this, Lisa?
Um, I'm sure he has the last, the one that was sent. I don't know if he has the updated one.
Yeah, so this one was 2016, so.
That email I just sent to you, and if you want to forward that to Joe, or if you want me to forward that to Joe?
I can do it.
Okay.
All right. Did we cover that one?
Yep.
All right. The next thing on the agenda is the Town Management Study Committee. I have a request for access to town council regarding research on home rule petition language and options regarding creation of the town administrator post.
That is correct. We are in the process of looking at special acts that other towns have used, and we're gonna try and pick the, the best parts from those. It's something that, I don't think it's imminent in terms of when we're gonna need to do this, but at some point during the summer, or certainly early fall, we're gonna wanna touch base with council, because we want to make sure what we put together goes before the legislature properly, because we are changing things. And we're, obviously, we're not, we don't have the legal expertise to make sure we're doing it right. That's the bottom line.
Okay.
And I.
And when we get to that point, we'll certainly notify the board and give you a copy of what we're, what we want to put before town council.
Okay. I mean, even if you wanted to send it to Mary, and Mary can forward it, or whatever.
Sure, yeah, however.
However you'd like. However you'd like to do it.
We'll get it to you, yeah.
And I think one of the requests was also, they were wondering who they might be working with over at Legal on this particular...
Mary could probably inquire.
Yeah.
See who would best be, best fit.
Yeah, just so they know it's sort of coming.
Yeah.
And if they have any, any structure that they've worked with already that...
Yeah, any initial input that would help guide us and save some time and money and all that sort of thing, sure.
Yeah, I think probably you're doing the right thing as far as looking at what's out there, coming up with something you think will work and then handing it off to Town Council.
Trying to look at what's out there and I'm going to say, maybe wrong expression, but modify it according to what our needs are in this town.
Right. Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see. We've got contracts for National Grid.
Okay. The contract for National Grid is a contract to buy back the streetlights for a dollar so that we can proceed with the LED streetlight project. The reason that we're signing them again is we needed more copies than we had. We need six copies.
Mm-hmm.
And the first time we only signed two and the first two were signed by Thomas, so we need to sign all six.
Okay. Alright, this looks like them.
Yes, we will be then the proud owner of 60-some streetlights.
Oh boy.
Not the poles.
Just the lights.
Just the lights.
Ah.
And they are a dollar because they're really old.
We're going to auction them off, raise money for the town?
I think so.
Someone will slide over at the Berlin Memorial School?
Be on the ticket or leave it, is that kind of the deal?
Yeah, bring it down to the transfer station.
Yeah. Alright, this looks like it's informational. Am I correct?
Oh, that's nothing. If there's not tagging outside, nope. That's just the background and sidelines and...
Okay. And that's a different one. That's the MAPC. That is the Memorandum of Understanding that makes us eligible for the grant where if we switch over to LEDs, they will give us, I think it's around $8,000 back in a grant. But we need to sign this Memorandum of Understanding, which we can do now that we have the contract to buy said streetlights.
Okay. So, does it matter the order in which we sign these or do I hear...
I'll just put them all in the minutes, the way you're saying, the title of everything.
Alright, do I hear a motion to sign and execute the documents?
Motion to sign and execute the documents.
Seconded, sign and document the documents.
Got it.
Sounds good.
I hear a motion and a second. Is there anything else anybody would like to add?
Nope.
Alright, then all in favor, say aye.
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 Good. Lot of hard work here by the...
By the Energy Committee, yep. When this all started, you remember I said going to trainings is sometimes helpful from, this all started when I went to a training last year and MAPC was there and they said, "Oh, we're doing this wonderful project with streetlights." And my husband is actually the chair of the Energy Committee, so I brought it home and said, "Honey, they're doing this wonderful project with LED streetlights." I would also like to note that Eloise has actually been working on this project for a very, very long time and will be very happy if we get it done this time.
Well, kudos to the entire committee for their hard work.
If you run out of things, let me know, I'll give you my pen.
Okay. Oh my goodness. Well, let's see. She put the date on this one, right?
Yeah, I did it on that.
And the dates are there. Do you want me to sign this one? It looks like my name just needed to be printed there.
No, that's just a point of contact.
Okay.
For notice purposes.
Alright.
They had a list of instructions, like Islam. This is the power...
I saw all of the attachments. And this is what was in it. So this one needs a date, 5/29?
Yes.
Now I probably lost my agenda.
Okay.
Alright. Contracts National Grid.
And then there's a second contract, 11B.
And then the Community Compact Information Technology Grant for 29,000. Yes.
Yes.
You want to tell us a little bit about that?
This will go towards the inspectors' software that was at town meeting. There was a warrant for $35,000. This will cover 29 of that. A small portion, I think, will still be used because the inspectors actually need tablets. They will be able to actually access their information when they are on the road, which is where they are most of the time, so...
So they're going to really do those tablets this time?
They, actually, I believe they are. And Joe can show them how to use the software because he's used it before. This should also help facilitate communications between the other boards because you can go through and Conservation and the others that are involved in these things will get notifications and be able to provide feedback on the software.
Mm-hmm. Alright. I'll put that back in there.
But the tablets or any hardware was cut out of, cut out of the grant. We did ask.
Yes.
And they just said no. We tried.
Well, that's, that's quite an accomplishment anyway.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, Tom Galvin, the IT committee's great, but Tom Galvin is amazing, so...
Mm-hmm. Did he put together the grant?
He put together the grant.
Great.
He had a little bit of help and feedback, but he was, he actually did a lot of it on vacation, so...
Mm-hmm. Good. And we have a letter of congratulations to the Berlin Girl Scouts.
Just that Community Compact, you just, to vote for the chair to sign that.
Oh, alright. Whoops.
Motion to approve Chris signing that?
And you and Peg too.
Oh, the motion to...
Looks like, oh no, this is, that's the Girl Scouts.
No, that's the Girl Scouts.
You had already gone through those. I think that's just your signature.
Alright, there is the sticky.
Motion to approve the grant.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the Berlin Girl Scout Silver Awards. Would you like me to read this?
Mm-hmm.
This is sent to Tammy Breen at the Girl Scouts of Central and Western Massachusetts. The Berlin Board of Selectmen paused to honor the silver award achievements of two Berlin Girl Scouts. Kelsey McDonald, Ms. McDonald created an LBGTQ information website for use by students and guidance counselors at the Advanced Math and Science Academy in Marlboro. Erin Sanford and Ms. Sanford has created a sensory board which is installed on the riding trail at the Perkins School to provide students sensory stimulation. The Girl Scout Silver Award is the highest award Girl Scouts in grade 6 through 8 can achieve and it recognizes their efforts in a range of Girl Scout and community experiences as well as their commitment to improving their lives and the lives of those around them. The Berlin Board of Selectmen applauds these young women of Berlin for the positive contribution they are making in our community.
That's fantastic.
Excellent.
Do I hear a motion to execute the document by all three of us?
Or a motion to sign the document?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh geez, there's more stickies in there. We need to do all three.
There's just one.
Yeah. Well, do you want to do all three and then we'll go back this way? And is there, is there any other new business?
Just if you wanted to circle back on the, I don't know what the Development Committee feedback is.
I saw Janet, actually, other Janet, Janet Campbell popped her head in, but she didn't come in.
I go check.
Alright.
I had two.
Two other business, two other businesses.
New businesses.
Hey.
So actually, Lisa, last week you had brought up about Tom coming back under the work-off rule. Took some time to think about it. Did he, who did he approach? Do we know that he definitely wants to do this?
He talked to me and he said he'd turn his paperwork in in a couple of weeks.
Okay, so we'll know exactly what it is, what it does, timeframe. Okay, cool. Alright. And then the second one that I had was, as I'm starting to talk to these other departments within town, I'm starting from scratch, which is good, starting anew. But going forward, can we put something together so as liaisons to the, to the departments that we have notes, action items, kind of like what's coming up in the event, you know, one of us is out of pocket for a little while, somebody else steps in, they know something needs to be signed, done, there's a meeting. I'm just feeling like a little disjointed of, you know, one was the library, "Oh, well Peg, you need to do this." So I'm like, "Okay, I got nothing, thank you." You know, I mean, in June as well, you know, "Hey, this has been ongoing, where are we?" And I'm like, "Mm, didn't know, thank you." So it would just be nice, and it doesn't have to be anything large and extremely complex, an Excel spreadsheet. And, you know, I'd be happy to come back with like a draft, something that I use at work, which is extremely handy so that if I can't go to a meeting, I just go, "Here you are, Chris," and it's got everything from notes, action items, who's doing what, and you go, "Okay, thank you," and just take it and go. To me, that, I would just find it extremely useful. And plus too, I don't know if something comes up in either of your worlds that I could use. So without either chatting with you or, or coming down to the Selectmen Updates, it's just nice to know so that we have a, more information of what's going on with all departments so that we're acting as one and not silos.
Right, right. No, I think it's a good idea. You say you can put together a spreadsheet that...
Yeah, easy peasy.
Okay.
I'll steal it from work.
Just maybe make it available on Google Drive so we can go all and just go update it there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
One document, not, not a document that comes over email back and forth.
No, no, no. No, it needs to be, it needs to be in one place so that as you're getting ready to go talk to, "Oh, the Board of Health," and I've been chatting with, "Oh, I don't know, Capital Planning," if there's something there, you can just look as a quick reference. So no, absolutely, I can put that together, put a draft together and then get it up on the drive for review and input before we make it live and go.
Okay. The other thing I was going to say is that we, I was going to suggest we do something. I wasn't sure quite what, whether was what you're suggesting. But, you know, we need, we need transparency and better communication between the board members and our secretary and the public. I mean, things need to be more transparent.
Agreed.
And so whether we also do like we've been doing, like updates on what we're each, have been working on in the past week with our liaisons. I think continuing those reports is good and just trying to make sure that we don't forget one and, you know, I usually try to write everything down I've been doing this week and, and I have a few things that I can fill you in when we get to Selectmen Updates. Is that...
Oh, I think the Selectmen Updates work very well for...
Yeah.
Saying where we've been and what we've done for the week, so...
Yeah. And, and you're right though, it would be good to have something where we've all got the information so that, it wouldn't even be a bad idea, you know, for especially some things that we need to share with the public.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, I was, I was going to say something about that too. It's in my notes.
Yeah. I just want to be careful that it doesn't become anything too extensive. I'm happy to put brief notes, but there's already such a time suck here that I'm not going to write missives.
No, 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 and I wouldn't expect that. More so, library, "Hey, this needs to be done in 30 days. Has it been reviewed? Has it been discussed? Do we have someone on it? Done. Check." You know, just as simple as that. Not, "Oh, I spent an hour and a half chatting with so-and-so and we talked about..."
Yeah.
No, just more so, you know, "I'm out, I go away for two weeks." I can say, "Chris, Lisa, please look at the doc. I've got a couple of things coming up. Can you please make sure it gets done? Sure, here it is." Great, thank you, off we go.
Okay.
Or vice versa. Indeed, indeed. No, you're not allowed to go anywhere.
Alright. That sounds good. Any other new business? How about old business? Is there anything where...
Amy asked today if there were, there was lingering unaddressed Town Council matters that needed to be brought to the firm's attention. So if, if you and I want to work on a list, I think a lot of it has gone stale. That was in the folder that we had.
Right.
So I, I actually don't think there's much other than perhaps the ABCC circling around on Liquor Barn. But that's like new because it's re-erupting.
Right.
But that was, that's a kind of, I don't know of anything else that's really pressing.
Yeah. I was actually going to ask you, maybe we could take a look at the folder you have for outstanding, no, no answers from Legal.
Yep.
And then we can bring it back to the board and say, "Okay, this one is, we don't need this anymore, or this one we're going to pursue." Sound good?
It isn't actually a complete list anymore because there is a lot that Tom would take on to say that he was going to follow forward on, so there wasn't, those weren't even added to the folder.
Yeah.
But I mean, I do think most of it is probably in hand. But yeah, if we could make a list so everyone can see what was hanging.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
I checked with Planning Board.
Oh.
They felt that they were within 15 minutes of having feedback and I said, I didn't know how long your executive session would take, but maybe you might want to do your executive session and they'd be ready after that.
Right, okay.
So if you wanted to go into executive session, you just reserve the right to go back into open session to continue.
Okay.
Board business.
Sorry, Roger. Alright, if there's, if we can't have, don't have any other old business, then we'll just move on and see if there's any Selectmen Updates that we have.
No, I mean, I met with Chief Paul last Friday. We went over plans that he had for upcoming expenditures next year, trainings that he invited all of us to go to, which could be a lot of fun.
Oh, I love going to fire training.
Ah, yeah, the list looked, looked rather neat. You know, plans, you know, regarding, you know, some things he's got in the works with other towns that he's working with. He's working with Chief Galvin and various committees on. But no, very, very positive, you know, talking about renovations for the station, you know, on the second floor, but just a lot of starting to get to know what he needs, you know, from me. In terms of the library, thank you for that information. I've been in touch with them, told them it was on the agenda for this week, and I dropped them a note and just let them know where we are with that, so appreciate that. And then June on the accountant, she's been sending a few documents forth just to make sure that we get a hold of, I think you had commented on one of them, $5,000 cost for an exam? The AR one?
It's for an audit.
Yes.
When we, when we switch over to the new tax collector, we need an audit, a cash audit.
Yep.
So she's on vacation this week. She said when she came back that we'd sit down and she'd kind of catch me up on things that were lingering that need to be addressed, but that's it.
Okay, sounds good. We sit, do you have anything?
Well, I already, Town Management was the legal piece of it, so I think that was pretty much it for last week. Other than having the Ballard House today.
Yep.
You got all my stuff.
Anything else that we didn't touch on?
I think we're good.
All right, well, let's see what I've got here. I think I sent a letter or an email to both of you, and the, some of the people involved, that we did get some state funding for the UTV that the Fire Chief requested, and the community garden irrigation that the Agricultural Commission put in for a request to Senator Tran's office and Senator Naughton. And we managed to get both of those. That was, that's terrific. I think I did most of this already too. I was going to ask, well, I can ask that in a minute. I attended the interviews for Highway today. We had two very good applicants. I think I know which way our subcommittee is leaning. It was Keith, Jim Spinney, and myself interviewed the candidates. And, but I think, you know, we've got some, two good choices. So I think by the end of the week, there'll be a decision about that. I spoke with Keith also today about ordering four new tables for the meeting rooms. And then the money will come out of his municipal building budgets. He's got some money left over from this year that we can spend on those. And Amy, June's assistant, did a terrific job finding the best price for those particular tables. I think she saved us something like $195 off the regular price at Quill by buying them in another location.
So are we going still with the same?
No, they are.
Actual business tables?
Two-inch, they are banquet tables, because I think that's what both those rooms probably still need. And they are plastic, but they're about two or three inches thick of plastic. And the legs fold up. It doesn't fold in the center, and they're, it is still, it's about 96 inches or eight feet.
Well, it's better than the ones that are.
Oh, yeah. The, I mean, these will be lighter than the other ones, which are, I think, almost 100 pounds or something. When you, when you have to pick them up, these might be like 49 pounds or something. And I got the, I got some feedback from Keith, because he's the one who's always moving them. So I was glad we kind of got that taken care of before the end of the fiscal year. I think that was about it for my updates, but I did see here that, I guess I had a couple of questions. One was, Mary, I saw an email about responding to KP Law with the options for budget.
Oh, yeah, that's actually, a couple.
Is that something that we need to answer?
I answered already.
Oh, okay, good. That's what I was just following up to see whether it had been answered.
Accounting agrees that they like that June bill to be split in half, so as soon as they have the first half of June done, they invoice us on it, and then the second half of June, we pay it in the first two weeks of July, and it's all good for the fiscal year 18.
Okay.
So that's kind of the way that's gone for the past couple of years. It is a choice, but we, June kind of likes it to be split up that way, and that's how it goes.
Okay, and that's what I was going to say, is maybe it'd be better to find out what does June want?
Only because we had a reserve and transfer this year too, if you needed to hustle and do something to pay that bill.
Right.
You know, so, yeah.
Right. Okay. And then the other question for us was about the outside auditor, and I'm assuming that June was recommending we do the outside audit, and if that was agreeable to both of you.
I think audits should be done from outside.
Yes.
Agreed.
Okay. All right, and then at some point, I think we need to talk about the Liquor Barn, but maybe after.
Well, the ABCC came last week, and they were supposed to send an email with his findings, which didn't arrive today, so I'm not sure why.
Okay.
But he also said that the ABCC could conduct a hearing, but they usually want the locals to do it themselves. So he knows that a warning to exercise the license was sent something like nine months ago.
Right.
So, and I told Amy that today too, that procedurally, the board might want help walking through how that hearing works to make sure that their rights are protected and the board has proceeded the right way.
Okay.
She thought that there was definitely councils, I think she suggested Brian Riley.
Okay. All right, I just, it's on my radar.
Well, I kind of thought once we had that paper for it, it would trigger.
Right, right.
If you want, instead of waiting two weeks, because you're going to go on to a summer schedule, if you did receive something to that end, do you want me to send it off to KP Law to start looking at it? Or do you want to wait two weeks? Well, it maybe depends on what it is.
We could get something tomorrow from ABCC, I suppose.
Yep.
I would, I would wait until we got it.
Yeah, she also said it wasn't a big deal, because you meet every week and then start going every other week.
Yeah.
A lot of towns meet every other week and start going once a month, so it wouldn't be so bad to wait.
Right, right. So we'll just wait and see what we get, hopefully by email.
Right, that's what he said.
All right. So, good, very good, thank you, all right.
And you have the temporary certificate of occupancy for the 1870. That's new.
Right.
Right, is that new since the last meeting, or did that happen at last week's meeting? At least the insurance is back with Maya now anyhow.
Right, I did see the emails as far as the insurance is back with Maya, and it's just a temporary though, correct?
Right, good for 90 days, but the only issue is the Architectural Access Board. And once they approve, then that, there's no punch list, there's nothing, no other work here that needs to be done, just review at the state level.
Right.
And it could be a permanent certificate of occupancy.
And I think, did they, did I see something about scheduling can start again?
They're, they're doing it now. They're, today, as of today, they know that they can start renting it out again.
Well, good, good. All right. So. We're going to go into executive session to return to open session, possibly only to adjourn, but it could be to discuss the, yeah, EDC membership. So the motion is to go into executive session for preparation of contract negotiations with Fire EMS Chief. Well, I think what I learned at the devence was that you make the motion and you second it, and then you do the road call vote.
Okay, move to go into executive session?
Seconded.
All right, for the purposes I said. And all in favor?
Waisaki, aye.
Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Okay. So we're back from executive session, and we have one more item on the agenda, which is to make the annual appointments. I believe we sort of talked about all of the.
There's a couple of committees a couple of weeks ago that you agreed would drop off. Home Day Committee is dropping off, Pipeline Study Committee is dropping off. ADA, did I say ADA Study Committee already? ADA Study Committee is dropping off. So what's left there is, and anyone who's undecided now has, I've now heard from, so every single person who was up this year, I've heard from, there was only one thing that you were holding on was to get feedback from the planning board about Economic Development Committee.
Right.
And one member in particular, because one person is coming back, Paul's coming back.
Yes.
There's one member of the EDC that, you were seeking feedback from the other board, which is, not a feedback from the planning board, it's a joint appointment.
Right.
Did they vote?
They voted to recommend appointment of both.
What was the vote?
To recommend both. Oh, 5-0, I think.
It was unanimous.
All right, that is what this is to the effect, on May 29, the planning board voted to reappoint. I sound like down meeting, don't I? On May 29, the planning board voted to.
I won't call you Barry.
Reappoint Connie Murphy and Paul Anderson to the Economic Development Committee, and that's from Paul, not Paul.
Ron Vavruska.
Ron, can't read his writing. Ron Vavruska. All right. So we as a slate of appointments, do we want to make a separate motion to this effect? And then do a, do the slate of appointments that we have? Mary has very diligently contacted all of the reappointees. So do I hear a motion to appoint Connie Murphy and Paul Anderson to the Economic Development Committee?
Move to appoint Connie Anderson and Paul Murphy to the Economic Development Committee.
Seconded.
Okay, you have anything else?
Well, I mean, in my managerial background, when you have an issue with an employee slash volunteer, you lay out expectations, you know, this is, this is what's expected. And yes, I understand, Lisa, going to your point, that when you have a volunteer, you have somebody who's willing to give up their time to say, hey, pick me, pick me, I want to help. But at the same time, if they become a detriment to the organization department, that you just make it very clear, here are the expectations of all the people in the meeting. You know, this is what we're going to do, this is what we're going to meet, if you, you know, no one attends, we're going to continue to do blah, blah, blah. I think after a certain period of time, if the person isn't fulfilling their obligations, then either you come back to the board or as a committee, say, this just isn't working. You know, unfortunately, there is no input from you. And again, this is how I operate in management world. You lay it out, and you give that person an opportunity to either respond, step up, or say, yeah, you know what? You're right, I'm out, I can't do this. I think that would be more fair, so the person doesn't come back and go, well, you're picking on me. And then all of a sudden, no one wants to play.
But there's two things. I'm not her boss. I'm a volunteer, I have no more rights than the next volunteer. And this has been going on since December. I think that's a lot of time. I've been trying since December.
But how does she feel?
She feels, she came up with some explanation as to why she didn't have my phone number in December, and why she couldn't get it. And she acknowledged that she got my email with a request to speak to her about this reappointment, whatever, a month ago, and was too busy. And I said, you know what? She and I are less busy than Connie, I'm sorry, Nadine and Paul, and they call me back. I'm not a priority, apparently.
Maya Lee.
I can't communicate.
Go ahead.
I mean, I can't communicate with her, if I can't communicate with her. And there's other members of the community, I think, that'll fill the void. And if I have the opportunity to do that, that'll make us better.
I mean, my suggestion would have been, take her under your wing. You know, like you said, follow up, follow up on the action items. Make sure they're being done, because you want the committee to be successful, no matter what, correct?
Yeah, so I don't have time to do the things on the agenda that I've set out for myself and to track others to do or to promote. I certainly don't have the time to take her under my wing. That's not, that's not, I mean, I'm.
It could be very rewarding.
You know.
What is the feeling of the department, of the organization? Do they want her back or not?
I want them to speak for themselves.
Okay.
It would, it would be. I'll just say it's mixed.
And I mean, I guess we also have, we have something from the planning board here, saying they voted 5-0 to reappoint.
Right. Well, we have a motion on the table and a second. Is there anything else to be said? Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would suggest, you know, maybe follow up with the planning board and ourselves in a few months. See if anything's improved. Give feedback to both of us.
Well, I mean, and the planning board falls under me as well, so I can step in. Form, hey, I'm new. What can I do to help? I'm only going to be able to play that card for so long, I realize that, but maybe there's something that I can do to help. It's worth a try. And then if at the end, there's, there's nothing I can do, there's nothing the group can do, there's, you know, the participation from this volunteer is not what it is. Let me figure out what to do next. I'm all for giving somebody a second chance once everything is clear to them what they need to do or not do.
Well, maybe we'll get a phone call to do a lesson, talk about a strategy you might have.
Absolutely.
And I know you're probably a little busy.
Nah, I'm good.
All right, ladies, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Keep us posted, or you can keep us posted.
Yes, ma'am.
Both. All right, appreciate it. Appreciate your work.
Thanks.
Cool, thank you, Peter.
All right, now we have the slate of the volunteers.
Motion to approve.
And employees, there's also employees on this.
Oh, and, yes, I forget what the list is called again now.
The Selectmen Appointments.
Selectmen Appointments, there you go. Motion to approve the Selectmen Appointments.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A lot of hard work went into this, this following up and, you know, with emails and everything else, trying to get every single person.
But I do appreciate you making sure that there weren't any dead people in there.
Thank you, Mary.
I was worried.
All right, so do, I think we've covered everything. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.